Bruce, you must have something really good, too.
Of course I do. It's Bruce Danielson, and I guess I'm here to entertain you, too.
Good evening, everyone. Welcome to our Tuesday, May 4, Sioux Falls City Council meeting. May the fourth be with you. We're supposed to say that on May 4, right?
Nice.
Uh, we'll go ahead and get started by reading our roll, please.
Councilmembers Kylie.
Here.
Naitzer.
Here.
Selberg.
Here.
Sale.
Here.
Starr.
Here.
Brecky.
Here.
Erickson.
Here.
Jensen.
Here.
All right, here to give our invocation tonight is Dr. David Aronson with Mount Zion Congregation, so I ask that you rise for his invocation and stay standing for our Pledge of Allegiance.
We pray for all who hold positions of leadership and responsibility in our government, local, state, and national. May God's blessing rest upon our leaders and make them responsive to your will, so that they may be, to the world, an example of justice and compassion. Deepen their love for our community and their desire to serve it. Strengthen their power of self-sacrifice for our community's welfare. Help them to uphold its good name by right conduct. Cause us to see clearly that the well-being of our community is in the hands of all its citizens. imbue us with real zeal for the cause of liberty in our own land and in all lands, and help us always to keep our homes safe from affliction, strife, and upheaval. May we, citizens, guide with integrity, and may our leadership be in your service, and may we appreciate their time and their devotion. Bless us with the fruits of wisdom and understanding, and may our efforts bring fulfillment and joy. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Good luck.
That's funny. I can actually kinda hear you walking back there.
All right, thank you, David, for the invocation. Move on to item four, which is our consent agenda. Any changes or motions there?
Move approval.
Second, Kylie.
All right, motion by Selberg, seconded by Kylie to approve the consent agenda. Any discussion on that? All right, let's take a vote, please.
Councilmembers Kylie.
Yeah.
Naitzer.
Yes.
Selberg.
Yes.
Sale.
Yes.
Starr.
Yes.
Brecky.
Yes.
Erickson.
Yes.
Jensen.
Yes.
All right, that passes eight to zero. Jump ahead to item thirty-five, which is our regular agenda. Look for a motion there.
Move to approve, Erickson.
Second, Kylie.
All right, motion by Erickson, seconded by Kylie. Any discussion there? Counselor Naitzer?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to amend by moving items fifty-eight and fifty-nine to follow items forty-eight and fifty-three, respectively.
Second, Erickson.
All right, motion by Naitzer, seconded by Erickson to move those items accordingly. Any discussion there? All right, let's vote on that, please.
Councilmembers Kylie.
Yeah.
Naitzer.
Yes.
Selberg.
Yes.
Sale.
Yes.
Starr.
Yes.
Brecky.
Yes.
Erickson.
Yes.
Jensen.
Yes.
All right, that passes eight to zero. Back to the main motion as amended. Any other amendments to make? All right, let's vote on that, then, please.
Councilmember Kylie.
Yeah.
Naitzer.
Yes.
Selberg.
Yes.
Sale.
Yes.
Starr.
Yes.
Brecky.
Yes.
Erickson.
Yes.
Jensen.
Yes.
That passes eight to zero. Before we jump into our agenda, just want to review how public input works for our agenda items, for regular agenda items. Comments are limited to three minutes unless the item is being presented for final adoption, in which case, public input is limited to five minutes. For our regular agenda items, comments are limited to the agenda item under consideration only. And during general public input, at the end of the meeting, comments will be no more than three minutes per person. So we'll move on to item thirty-six.
Item thirty-six is a new twenty-twenty-one-twenty-two retail malt beverage South Dakota farm wine license for MG Oil Company, Corner Pantry Twenty-Three Casino, forty-two oh nine West Twelfth Street, CUP not required. Pending permit issuance and final inspections per building services. Item thirty-seven is a request to add video lottery terminals with the new twenty-twenty-one-twenty-two retail malt beverage South Dakota farm wine license for MG Oil Company, Corner Pantry Twenty-Three Casino, forty-two oh nine West Twelfth Street. Pending permit issuance and final inspections per building services. Item thirty-eight is a special one-day liquor license for Sioux Falls area community foundation to be operated at First Premier Bank, five hundred South Minnesota Avenue for a fundraiser on May sixth, two thousand twenty-one. Item thirty-nine is a special one-day malt beverage license for Falls area single-track to be operated at The Great Outdoor Store, two oh one East Tenth Street, for a fundraiser on May twenty-second, two thousand twenty-one. Item forty is a special one-day malt beverage license for Fernson Brewing Company to be operated at Great Outdoor Store, two oh one East Tenth Street for a gear and beer event on May twenty-second, two thousand twenty-one. Item forty-one is a special one-day malt beverage license and special one-day wine license for Downtown Sioux Falls Incorporated to be operated at Eighth and Railroad Center parking lot, four oh one East Eighth Street for an East Bank Block Party on June fourth, two thousand twenty-one. Item forty-two is a special one-day liquor license for Red Rock Bar and Grill Incorporated to be operated at forty-eight hundred North Career Avenue for Porcupalooza on June fourth and fifth, two thousand twenty-one. Item forty-three is a special one-day liquor license for TNT Entertainment to be operated at Albert House Parking Lot, three thirty-seven North Phillips Avenue for a concert on July sixteenth, two thousand twenty-one.
Good evening, Jamie.
Jamie Palmer with Licensing, and I'm here to answer any questions that you may have on items thirty-six through forty-three.
All right, thank you, ma'am. Anyone from the public here to speak on thirty-six to forty-three? All right, councilors, you got any questions for Jamie on these items?
Move to approve, Erickson.
Second, Naitzer.
All right, motion by Erickson, seconded by Naitzer. Any discussion there? All right, hearing none, let's vote, please.
Councilmembers Kylie.
Yeah.
Naitzer.
Yes.
Selberg.
Yes.
Sale.
Yes.
Starr.
Yes.
Brecky.
Yes.
Erickson.
Yes.
Jensen.
Yes.
All right, that passes eight to zero. Item forty-four.
Item forty-four is a second reading, deferred from the meeting of Tuesday, April sixth, two thousand twenty-one, an ordinance of the city of Sioux Falls, South Dakota rezoning property located at seventeen hundred East Seventy-Second Street, north from the RS, single-family residential suburban and RD-one twin-home duplex residential suburban districts to the RA-two apartment residential moderate-density RD-one, twin-home duplex residential suburban and I-one light industrial districts, number one three eight one eight, two thousand twenty-one, and amending the official zoning map of the city of Sioux Falls. The Planning Commission recommends approval five to zero. Private applicants, Parsland Real Estate Group, Clint Dreyer.
Hi, Jason.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. Jason Bieber, representing Planning and Development Services. This is an application by Clint Dreyer. The owner is Granite Valley LLP. It's located north of I-ninety and east of North Cliff Avenue. It's just under fifteen acres in size. This is the proposed plan. They are looking at extending some industrial uses and then transition to some townhomes and apartments, twin homes, and then single-family that would flow into the existing single-family uses. This was the original plan that was submitted as part of our first reading, as you know, back in April. We did since that time have a neighborhood meeting with the neighbors on Thursday, April twenty-second, at seven o'clock. I was up at the Granite Valley Park with city staff, the applicant, and several neighbors from the Granite Valley area. It was a cordial discussion between all parties involved, very productive. We discussed topics including proposed multifamily units out there, the height of the units, traffic concerns, and then also neighborhood fit with this proposed rezoning within those existing residential uses within the Granite Valley area. From this neighborhood meeting, the applicant has agreed, and the neighborhood was somewhat supportive of this change, looking to take that RA-two portion of the proposed zoning and drop that down to RA-one, which would allow a maximum of two stories and twenty-four units, which would be a similar character with the neighborhood. He indicated that this would still work with his plan. His intent, obviously, is to do fourplexes and eightplexes on this lot. He did want a little bit more flexibility, just in case, over the next five or so years, market changes, or market would make changes. And so he has agreed to actually put a condition on that RA-one also that would limit sixteen units per building within that RA-one portion to keep those number of units down and hopefully alleviate some of those neighbors' concerns with traffic in Granite Valley. As part of this development, North Subert Avenue will also be finished from Dyke Road and then all the way up to Seventy-Second Street, and hopefully, this will alleviate some of the traffic with this proposed development. Most of them, we're hoping, will go north or south, north to Seventy-Second and over to Cliff, or south to Dyke and over to Cliff for the lighted intersection, and hopefully reduce that traffic going west through Sixty-Seventh Streets, through that existing residential neighborhood.
All right, thanks, Jason. Anyone from the public here to speak on this item tonight? Come on up. Good evening, sir.
I'm Clint Dreyer. Good evening, everyone. And I'm the applicant for this change. And yes, just like Jason said, yeah, we have the intent of the four, eightplexes in that property, but yes, in case something changes over time, it's just the idea of, I think, you know, in my looking at it, and I'm no architect, I think sixteen units is about the most that would fit in there. So that's kinda what I'm, all I'm thinking of in saying that, but it's been great meeting with the neighbors and working through these questions, so that's where I stand.
All right, thanks, Clint. We'll call you up if we have any questions from the council. See if anyone else is here for public input on this item. Come on up, sir. Good evening.
Council. I'm Bud Van Bacher, and I'm kind of the ramrodder up there in Granite Valley. First thing I want to say is thank you to Jason and everybody from the city that was up there with us, with Clint. We've had some wonderful communication. I would hope that all of these type of situations could operate like this. It's been wonderful. We did have some great meetings. We've had meetings with them, meetings with us as a neighborhood. They kinda proposed fourplexes, eightplexes. This sixteen thing is kinda new. Still a little apprehensive about it, but sounds like it's gonna be fourplexes and eightplexes is what he originally was talking to us about. And that's what, you know, we as a neighborhood would love it to stay single-family. That's what our heart's desire is, but we're willing to kinda move and allow the property to be developed and try and keep the countdown as far as traffic and density and so on. And so we've kinda moved to the middle with them, and they've moved to the middle with us, and it's really been, like I said, a wonderful time of just trying to work out what's best for that neighborhood up there. It's kind of a different scenario, trying to put a bunch of, you know, more condensed at the backside of a residential neighborhood that doesn't really have any traffic, you know, that will very seldom or not plan to go to the east, so they either have to go west or north or south. And so that was kinda one of our concerns, that it's not really gonna get developed more again as a neighborhood for traffic to eventually flow eastward, so that's kinda one of the things that we got a little nervous about, is all that traffic coming down Sixty-Seventh Street, which is a fairly busy street already. So, I mean, that's really it. Hopefully, we can get it developed, as he had talked about, fourplexes and eightplexes is our desire for the biggest, but I do understand his desire to have a little bit of flexibility in there, so I appreciate all the time. It's been wonderful, and thank you guys for your consideration on it.
All right, thank you for your comments. Anyone else here to speak on this item tonight? All right, councilors, you have any questions for Jason or Clint on this? Counselor Naitzer, go ahead.
Jason, you mentioned a condition. Are you going to need such as an amendment, such as maximum of sixteen units per building in the RA-one zone? Do you need?
Yeah, we would need an amendment for that, yes, correct, for that condition, so.
Does that sound okay to you? Do you want me to read it again?
To the, I'm sorry, what was the amendment that you were proposing?
You were talking about sixteen units, correct?
Yep.
So if we amended to say add a condition, that there be no more than sixteen units per building in the RA-one zone?
A maximum size of sixteen units per building is what we would probably think is the cleanest.
Maximum size of sixteen units?
Per building, yep, correct.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions for Jason? Counselor Starr, go ahead.
Yes, Mr. Bieber, didn't, wasn't this one we were waiting for, traffic study as part of that? Did we get one, and kinda what did it say?
Yep, Clint did do a traffic, not a full-fledged traffic study, because there's already one done for this entire area back in the early two thousands. So what we require with a change in zone, kind of an up-zone, is what we call a traffic memo, and that was done. I'm not exactly sure which company used, but it was reviewed by our traffic engineering team, and there is zero concerns with the increased traffic from when they were proposing the RA-three portion on Subert, Dyke, Sixty-seventh and Seventy-Second Streets, so. Thank you.
There are questions for Jason tonight, or the applicant? Look for a motion here, then.
Move approval?
Second, Jensen.
All right, motion by Selberg, seconded by Jensen. Counselor Naitzer, you wanna introduce that amendment?
Sure, I'll make a motion to amend by adding a condition, that there be a maximum size of sixteen units per building in the RA-one zone.
Second, Starr.
All right, motion by Naitzer, seconded by Starr on that. Any discussion there? All right, let's vote on the amendment, please.
Councilmember Kylie.
Yeah.
Naitzer.
Yes.
Selberg.
Yes.
Sale.
Yes.
Starr.
Yes.
Brecky.
Yes.
Erickson.
Yes.
Jensen.
Yes.
All right, the amendment passes eight to zero. We're at the main motion as amended. Is there any other amendments or discussion, counsel, on this? Counselor Starr?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is the way it's supposed to work. The neighborhood had some concerns. They had the opportunity several times, multiple times, and we went over and over and got them the information that they needed. Again, meeting in the middle is kinda nice to be able to get to that point. Not everybody got what they wanted, but taking the extra couple of weeks was really worth the effort, so thank you for Planning and Development to do the right thing, the developer, and then the neighborhood, to get all the facts of what's going on in the neighborhood, so we can make it work.
All right, any other discussion here? All right, let's vote on the main motion as amended, then.
Councilmembers Kylie.
Yeah.
Naitzer.
Yes.
Selberg.
Yes.
Sale.
Yes.
Starr.
Yes.
Brecky.
Yes.
Erickson.
Yes.
Jensen.
Yes.
All right, that passes eight to zero. Item forty-five.
Item forty-five is a second reading, an ordinance of the city of Sioux Falls, South Dakota rezoning property located at twelve hundred twelve oh two East Sixth Street from the RT-one single-family residential traditional district to the RT-two townhome residential traditional district, number thirteen eight eighty-four, two thousand twenty-one, and amending the official zoning map of the city of Sioux Falls. The Planning Commission recommends approval five to zero. Private applicant, Brandon Ness.
The applicant here is Brandon Ness. The owner is twenty-two LLC. It's located at the northeast corner of East Sixth Street and North Cliff Avenue. It's about point zero nine acres in size. The purpose of this rezoning is we're looking at matching the correct zoning with the current use of the property. It's a two-unit converted house.
All right, thanks, Jason. Anyone from the public here to speak on this one tonight? All right, councilors, you got any questions for Jason here?
Move to approve.
Second, Jensen.
All right, motion by Kylie, seconded by Jensen. Discussion, council? Hearing none, let's vote on this one, please.
Councilmembers Kylie.
Yeah.
Naitzer.
Yes.
Selberg.
Yes.
Sale.
Yes.
Starr.
Yes.
Brecky.
Yes.
Erickson.
Yes.
Jensen.
Yes.
That passes eight to zero. Next item?
Next item is forty-six, a second reading, an ordinance of the city of Sioux Falls, South Dakota rezoning property located at fifty-eight hundred East Twenty-Sixth Street from the O Office District to the S-one general institutional district, number thirteen eight eighty-six, two thousand twenty-one, and amending the official zoning map of the city of Sioux Falls. The Planning Commission recommends approval five to zero. Private applicants, Earhart Griffin and Associates, Damian Grebel.
The applicant here is Damian Grebel. The owner is Dolly Farm Legacy LLC. It's located at the northwest corner of Twenty-Sixth Street and South Veterans Parkway. It's about point zero nine acres in size. The purpose of this rezoning is they're looking at combining this little strip with the existing S-one strip to the south and construct a future medical clinic on the property.
All right, thanks, Jason. Anyone from the public would like to speak to this one tonight? Counselors, questions here?
Move approval?
Second.
Motion by Selberg, seconded by Jensen on this. Any discussion there, council? All right, hearing none, let's take a vote, please.
Councilmembers Kylie.
Yeah.
Naitzer.
Yes.
Selberg.
Yes.
Sale.
Yes.
Starr.
Yes.
Brecky.
Yes.
Erickson. Jensen.
Yes.
That passes eight to zero. Item forty-seven.
Item forty-seven is a second reading, an ordinance of the city of Sioux Falls, South Dakota rezoning property located at thirteen oh eight East Dyke Drive from the C-two commercial neighborhood and streetcar districts to the I-one light industrial district, number one thirty-nine forty-five, two thousand twenty-one, and amending the official zoning map of the city of Sioux Falls. The Planning Commission recommends approval five to zero. Private applicants, RCM Services Incorporated, Paul Reynolds.
The applicant here is Reynolds Construction Management. The owner is also Granite Valley Holdings, LLC. This is located north of I-ninety and east of Cliff, just southwest of our previous case. It's about point seven seven acres in size. The purpose of this rezoning is they're looking at constructing a seventy-five hundred square foot warehouse building on the lot.
All right, thanks, Jason. Anyone from the public would like to speak to this item? Counselors, questions on this one?
Move approval?
Second, Jensen.
Motion by Selberg, seconded by Jensen. Any discussion here? All right, hearing none, let's take a vote, please.
Councilmembers Kylie.
Yeah.
Naitzer.
Yes.
Selberg.
Yes.
Sale.
Yes.
Starr.
Yes.
Brecky.
Yes.
Erickson. Jensen.
Yes.
That passes eight to zero. Next item?
Item forty-eight is a second reading, an ordinance of the city of Sioux Falls, South Dakota rezoning property located south of East Forty-first Street and east of South Six Mile Road from the AG Agricultural District to the LW Live Work RD-two Townhome Residential Suburban and RS Single Family Residential Suburban Districts, number one thirty-nine forty-six, two thousand twenty-one, and amending the official zoning map of the city of Sioux Falls. The Planning Commission recommends approval six to zero. Private applicants, forty-one sixth LLC, Brady Hyde.
Mr. Mayor.
One second, go ahead.
I have to recuse myself because of an interest pursuant to thirty point zero one seven.
All right, thank you, counselor. Go ahead, Jason.
Okay, the applicant is requesting a deferral of this item, and then the subsequent item after this, to the May eleventh meeting. City staff, the applicant, our meeting with the neighbors out there on Thursday night at five-thirty, so we wanted a week deferral to talk through some of the issues out there.
All right, then look for a motion. Well, first, is there anyone from the public here to speak on this, then? All right, look for a motion then to defer this.
Mr. Mayor.
Counselor Kylie, go ahead.
I motion, make a motion to defer to the meeting of Tuesday, May eleventh, two thousand twenty-one.
Second, Naitzer.
All right, motion by Kylie and seconded by Naitzer on that motion to defer. Any discussion there? All right, let's take a vote on that, please.
Councilmembers Kylie.
Yeah.
Naitzer.
Yes.
Selberg.
Yes.
Sale.
Yes.
Starr.
Yes.
Brecky.
Yes.
Erickson.
Yes.
All right, the motion to defer passes seven to zero. And city attorney, Counselor Jensen has a conflict on this next item, too. Is that, is that right? Are these kinda together? Let's bring him back. I wanna make sure that that's the case.
He would need the conflict off of the second item as well.
Okay. You have a conflict on the next item, too, counselor, on fifty-eight?
A council member, item fifty-eight would be the preliminary plan that goes along with this rezoning.
Again, I'll recuse myself due to city ordinance, thirty point zero one seven.
All right, just wanted to be sure. Thank you for that. Jason, go ahead.
I need to read it into the record.
Oh, I'm sorry. Please read it in the record.
Item fifty-eight, a resolution of the city of Sioux Falls approving the preliminary plan of Split Rock Edition, one thirty-nine nineteen, two thousand twenty-one. Private applicants, Design and Develop Engineering LLC, Dave Gibbon.
This is the preliminary subdivision plan that went along with the rezoning, and we're also requesting this to be deferred to the May eleventh city council meeting, and we are requesting an amendment that I believe is in your notes to change the name of it to Ten Kate Edition. It was Split Rock Edition. However, there is already an existing Split Rock Edition subdivision, so we don't like to double things up, so.
Okay, anybody from the public here to speak on this one? All right, so we'll look for a motion to defer, and then we'll make an amendment to that motion to defer, so.
Looks like we should do a motion to approve first. Naitzer?
Second. Okay, go again.
A motion to approve, okay, then we'll amend, and then we'll defer. Got it. Motion to approve by Naitzer, seconded by Erickson. All right, now we'll introduce the amendment. Go ahead, Counselor Naitzer.
Thank you. I'll make a motion to amend by replacing Split Rock with Ten Kates in the title and body of the proposed resolution.
Second, Erickson.
All right, motion by Naitzer, seconded by Erickson on that amendment. Let's take a vote on that, please.
Councilmembers Kylie.
Yes.
Naitzer.
Yes.
Selberg.
Yes.
Sale.
Yes.
Starr.
Yes.
Brecky.
Yes.
Erickson.
Yes.
All right, that passes seven to zero, so now we're back to the main motion to approve.
I believe we move to defer at this point.
Yes.
So I make a motion to defer item fifty-eight to the meeting of Tuesday, May eleventh, two thousand twenty-one.
Second. All right, motion by Kylie and seconded by Naitzer to defer to the May eleven meeting. Any discussion there? Go ahead, Counselor Brecky.
Just for the benefit of the watching public, this item is kind of similar to the very first one, where I think both of the parties and the council have agreed that there just needs to be some more communication. I think what we're learning is that communication and compromise is huge, and if we can just give things more time when we find out that, you know, people have some concerns, it benefits everybody, and then when we come back, it was easy tonight for us all to vote for it because there was that. So that's kinda what's going on here, and since the two come as a pair, we're voting to defer both of them together.
All right, thanks, counselor. Any other discussion here? All right, let's take a vote on the motion to defer, then.
Councilmembers Kylie.
Yeah.
Naitzer.
Yes.
Selberg.
Yes.
Sale.
Yes.
Starr.
Yes.
Brecky.
Yes.
Erickson.
All right, that passes seven to zero. Counselor Erickson, you can get Counselor Jensen, and we will move on to item forty-nine, please.
Item forty-nine is a second reading, an ordinance of the city of Sioux Falls, South Dakota rezoning property located at nine fifteen, nine twenty-one, and nine twenty-three North Blaveld Avenue from the RT-one single-family residential traditional district to the RD-one twin-home duplex residential suburban district, number one thirty-nine sixty-four, two thousand twenty-one, and amending the official zoning map of the city of Sioux Falls. The Planning Commission recommends approval six to zero. Private applicants, Affordable Housing Solutions, Brent Tucker.
The applicant and owner here is Brent Tucker with Affordable Housing Solutions. It's located at nine fifteen through nine twenty-three North Blaveld Avenue. There previously some single-family houses that were in disrepair that have been torn down. It's about four, point four two acres in size. The purpose of this rezoning is the applicant is looking at constructing two twin homes on the three lots for a total of four units.
All right, thank you, sir. Anyone from the public here to speak on this tonight? All right, councilors, you have any questions for Jason here? Move approval? Okay, motion by Selberg, seconded by Erickson on this. Any discussion here? All right, hearing none, let's take a vote, please.
Councilmembers Kylie.
Yeah.
Naitzer.
Yes.
Selberg.
Yes.
Sale.
Yes.
Starr.
Yes.
Brecky.
Yes.
Erickson.
Yes.
Jensen.
Yes.
That item passes eight to zero. Next item, please.
Next item is, item fifty is a second reading, an ordinance of the city of Sioux Falls, South Dakota rezoning property located at three sixteen Northwestern Avenue from the RA-two apartment residential moderate-density district to the S-one general institutional district, number one thirty-nine eighty-three, two thousand twenty-one, and amending the official zoning map of the city of Sioux Falls. The Planning Commission recommends approval five to zero. Private applicants, Veterans Community Project, Ben Hendershot.
The applicant here is Ben Hendershot with Veterans Community Project. The owner is the city of Sioux Falls. It's located east of Northwestern Avenue, west of North Willow Avenue, and north of West Seventh Street, West Seventh Street, just north of the Axtel Park Track. It's about 1.84 acres in size. The purpose of this rezoning, as we have come to you a couple times, is we're looking to partner with the Veterans Community Project to do a homeless veterans tiny home village on this property with roughly thirty homes, a parking lot, and a community center. We do have some representatives from Veterans Community Project here if you have specific questions for them. Otherwise, we'd look forward to your support to continue this process forward and really go to the next step, so.
Thanks, Jason. Anyone from the public here to speak on this item tonight? All right, Counselors, do you have any questions for Jason? Move approval?
Second, Jensen.
All right, we have a motion by Selberg, seconded by Jensen. Any discussion here, counsel? All right, before we take the vote, just, I want to take a point of personal privilege. Jason and Ryan Sage are two of the four city employees that birthed this project out of what we call our ONWARD program in the city. So ONWARD program is a leadership development program in which we ask city employees to come up with new innovative solutions to problems, and they came up with this. It's been about a year, a little over a year in the process. We got hooked up with VCP, and it's a great example of innovation, of you guys taking a different look at an existing problem, and here we are today with the second reading to approve this for our community, so thanks for being part of that program, because if we weren't in that program, this project wouldn't have been brought forward. So thank you guys for that, and with that, seeing no further discussion, we will take a vote.
Councilmembers Kylie.
Yeah.
Knightzert.
Yes.
Selberg.
Yes.
Sale.
Yes.
Starr.
Yes.
Recky.
Yes.
Erickson.
Yes.
Jensen.
Yes.
That passes eight to zero. Next item, please.
Item fifty-one is a second reading, an ordinance of the city of Sioux Falls, South Dakota rezoning property located at 617 East Twenty-ninth Street, from the RS Single Family Residential Suburban District to the RT1 Single Family Residential Traditional District, number 14012, 2021, and amending the official zoning map of the city of Sioux Falls. The Planning Commission recommends approval five to zero. Private applicants, Brooke Van Gundy.
The applicant and owner here is Brooke Van Gundy. It's located 617 East Twenty-ninth Street, just east of St. Mary's Church. It's about .15 acres in size. The purpose of this rezoning is the lot is currently less than fifty feet, so we're looking at matching that correct zoning with the size of the existing lot.
Thanks, Jason. Anyone from the public wish to speak on this item here? Counselors, do you have any questions here?
Move to approve, Erickson.
Second, Sale.
All right, motion by Erickson and seconded by Sale. Any discussion, counsel? All right, we'll take a vote, please.
Councilmembers Kylie.
Yeah.
Knightzert.
Yes.
Selberg.
Yes.
Sale.
Yes.
Starr.
Yes.
Recky.
Yes.
Erickson.
Yes.
Jensen.
Yes.
That item passes eight to zero. Item fifty-two.
Item fifty-two is an ordinance of the city of Sioux Falls, South Dakota rezoning property located at 800 South Ebenezer Avenue, from the C4 Commercial Regional District to the MH Manufactured Residential Housing District, number 14019, 2021, and amending the official zoning map of the city of Sioux Falls. The Planning Commission recommends approval five to zero. Private applicants, Marion Community MHP LLC, Graham Belchers.
The applicant and owner here is Graham Belchers. It's located east of South Ebenezer Avenue, west of I-29, and south of West Twelfth Street. It's about 38.43 acres in size. The purpose of this rezoning is we're looking at matching the current use of the property. It's been a manufactured home park for some time, and so we're looking to rezonate to that. The applicant is here from California. He recently purchased this, along with the other mobile home, manufactured home parks in the area, and is really looking at putting some significant infrastructure investments within this home, excuse me, home and bringing a bunch of new homes in here. So if you have any specific questions for him and his plans, he is here to answer any of those, so.
All right, thanks, Jason. Is there anyone from the public here to speak on this item? Counselors, any questions for Jason or the applicant? Counselor Erickson, go ahead.
For the applicant, if, if he's here, just if you could give us a little bit of your vision, what you plan on, I know that he made reference that you're doing a bunch of updates and changes, so what does that look like? Is it landscaping? Is it, what, what is that?
Yeah, sure, good question. Let me take this up. So a little history on this, this used to be, was eventually going to be, prior owners are going to convert this into an auto dealership. We purchased it with the intent of keeping it as manufactured housing. So there's a lot of infrastructure work that hasn't been done for a long time that needs to be done. So we've already done a lot of work on trees that need to be trimmed, cut down. Just today, I was meeting with engineering company to basically redo the roads in there, so we've got hundreds of thousands of dollars of infrastructure work that we're going to be doing. We're bringing in new homes, so we're working with Iceman Homes, local company here. We've already brought in ten homes. The plan is over the next three, four years, just depending how fast it goes, we'll be bringing in close to a hundred new homes into this community. So the idea is really just to bring in more affordable housing into Sioux Falls, and with that, we want to put the requisite investment into the property just to make, bring it back up to deferred maintenance that hasn't been taken care of for a long time. Does that answer your question?
Yes, it does. Thank you very much, and, and, you know, we have seen some deferred maintenance throughout the whole city of Sioux Falls, and so thank you for your investment in this, and in South Dakota, we operate a little bit differently to where you can pick up the phone and you can have direct contact with those people that will answer the question to you, and so I encourage you, anything you need, to, to reach out. Our city staff is fantastic in making sure that when you're not here boots on the ground every day, making sure that it's taken care of to your fit, so thank you again.
Appreciate it. Any other questions?
Counselor Knightzert, go ahead.
Yeah, first of all, I want to thank you for coming all the way from California. Second of all, this is my district, and I have some significant mobile home parks, and I've worked personally with, with tenants in those parks where there's been significant deferred maintenance problems, and there's been absentee owners, for lack of a better term, and so I really want to commend you for, for being willing to put in a major investment into infrastructure and to, you know, improve the location. That's, that's very, very commendable, so, and I, I do get contacted, and I remember getting contacted from some of the people that live here. There's always some apprehension when there's a potential change in ownership, because I don't know what that's going to bring, but it's looking like there's good things to come, so thank you for the investment and looking to take care of your tenants.
Yeah, my pleasure.
Any other questions for the applicant while we have him here? All right. Thank you, sir.
Make a motion to approve?
Second, Kylie.
All right, motion by Erickson, seconded by Kylie on this item. Counsel, you have any discussion on this? All right, hearing none, let's take a vote, please.
Councilmembers Kylie.
Yeah.
Knightzert.
Yes.
Selberg.
Yes.
Sale.
Yes.
Starr.
Yes.
Recky.
Yes.
Erickson.
Yes.
Jensen.
Yes.
That passes eight to zero. Item fifty-three.
Item fifty-three is a second reading, an ordinance of the city of Sioux Falls, South Dakota rezoning property located north of West Benson Road and west of North Marion Road from the PO PUD Pedestrian Oriented PUD District to the RA1 Apartment Residential Low Density and RA2 Apartment Residential Moderate Density Districts, number 14007, 2021, and amending the official zoning map of the city of Sioux Falls. The Planning Commission recommends approval five to zero with the following conditions. One, require one evergreen tree every forty feet with a deciduous tree between each evergreen tree along the northwest property line that abuts the RD1 Twin Home Duplex Residential Suburban District. Private applicants is Creston Capital Holdings, Erica Malali.
Mr. Mayor.
Counselor Jensen.
I'm recusing myself to an interest pursuant to city ordinance thirty zero one seven.
All right, you are accused? Go ahead, Jason.
The applicant here is Erica Malali. The owner is Van Busker Companies, LLC. This one's located at the northwest corner of North Marion Road and West Benson Road. It's about nineteen acres in size. The purpose of this rezoning is they're looking to rezone roughly twelve acres in the center and south portions of the property to RA2, which allows that three stories at forty-eight units, maximum size per building, and then the west seven acres adjacent to those existing twin homes, they're proposing to zone RA1, which allows that maximum size of two stories and twenty-four units per building. This is just kind of a concept plan of the villa type and the apartment types that they're looking to, to do in this general area. Just to kind of run through some things that are currently allowed within the PO PUD, as indicated before, this was zoned as a Hazleton Plan Development back in 2007, and allowed all sorts of residential, commercial, office uses. It was then converted as part of Shape Places in 2014 to the pedestrian-oriented PUD. Both of these zoning districts would allow unlimited size for office, multifamily residential, and also unlimited size for commercial uses. Some examples would be Walmart could go here, apartment of unlimited size could, could currently go on this specific parcel. Neighborhood, and here's an example of some of the apartment complexes that currently could go. There's currently a hundred and fifty-three unit one at Fifty-seventh and Sycamore, that's four stories, and also the four-story University Hills, which is just to the north off of Marion Road. Just to give you a comparison, the, they're looking to do roughly four hundred and twenty-six units on seventeen point seven acres. That's what University Hills is proposing for a density. This, this specific, excuse me, four hundred and twenty-six units, they are proposing for this specific development on seventeen acres. Currently, University Hills that I talked about to the north, that four-story apartment complex with several buildings, they're looking, they currently have around four hundred and seventy-nine units, and they're under less than eight acres. So you can see it's about, their proposal is about half as dense as what University Hills currently is, and they could do University Hills on this specific parcel. Some of the neighborhood concerns that we've seen and you guys have seen by email is traffic within the existing neighborhood, noise from the new apartment complexes, the home value reduction of the existing twin homes and single family within the neighborhood, and also additional crime that comes, that indicated that can come with multifamily uses. Just to run through a couple of other things that the developer and the current owner is preparing to do, this is the preliminary plan that went along with the rezoning back in 2007. This entire parcel was proposed to filter out onto Yukon Drive at that time, pretty much going right by those existing single-family residential uses, so all of that traffic from any retail multifamily was going to go right on to that Yukon Drive. The revision that's coming, and that's the next item on the agenda, is the applicant is looking at putting that other major collector street, Olympia Drive, that would connect Yukon all the way down to Benson Road and hopefully filter most of that traffic from those proposed apartments, either to the north to Yukon and then out to Marion, or from this, to the south to Benson and out to Marion Road. City Traffic Engineering has engaged with the applicant and is strongly suggesting that Benson Road be paved from Marion Road over to Olympia Drive as part of this development to really give those proposed apartment users two paved accesses over to the arterial street on Marion Road. We do have Shannon with the Traffic Engineering's office here. If you have specific traffic questions, we can definitely have her come up, otherwise I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
All right, thanks, Jason. Anyone from the public here to speak on this item tonight? All right. No one for public input on this? All right, then, Counselors, do you have any questions for Jason here?
I'll start it off with the motion to approve, I guess.
Okay. Knightzert?
Second.
I got three people who seconded that. Who wants it? Counselor Kylie, you got it.
Give it to the first.
All right, I'll give it to Counselor Selberg. Motion by Knightzert, seconded by Counselor Selberg to approve this. Discussion, counsel. Counselor Knightzert, go ahead.
Well, notwithstanding the lack of public input, there is significant public interest in this, so just to get it on the record, just a couple things. First of all, this is a down zone, and that, that should always weigh heavily for us, considering what could happen, even understanding if neighbors don't necessarily like what the, what the down zone piece looks like. It could be even quote unquote worse. In talking to engineering, they're going to have to have paved access out of here, and if, if they're gonna, and one of the questions that comes up very frequently, and this is one of many, and we have another one on the other side of town that we deferred, where their questions come up about, because sometimes development outpaces our infrastructure and vice versa, we build arterials, so if we're not going to get out there and build an arterial, what happens? Well, the answer is, is that engineering would require that they build a road, kind of a rural section, an asphalt road, that would be wide enough for, for a few cars, so that there would be a paved way to get out in the interim until we get out, and then we do that, the actual build out, which would be a very significant investment and is driven really by demand and a number of other factors and, and development. There was some question about, and some concern about the height of the buildings that would back up to the twin homes. Very fair. Should be noted that in this particular development, the, the developer and the proposed buyers have agreed and are, and is something to help the, the neighbors and sensitivity to them are limiting it to two stories, the same height that you would have on a single-family home, so it won't be any taller than that, and they're going to have a pretty significant setback over and above what they need to have. I looked at potentially adding a condition for that, but it's very early in the development process, and the developers have gone on record and stated that that's what they plan to do, and they're going to try to do what they can. When you're this early in development, it's very difficult to just pick a number, because they don't know exactly where things are going to line up and what the city may require for engineering and drainage, and we don't want to set arbitrary number like forty and then have to come back here and talk about thirty-seven feet or, or something to that, to that effect. There was a concern that, or a request that we set the building height to be no higher than, than their buildings, be no higher than maybe one foot above their existing homes, and that's something that really, there's no way we can promise that, because that's really driven by the elevations that engineering and drainage are going to come up with. They're going to tell us where the, the elevation is going to have to be for the buildings. That can't be just arbitrarily chosen, and that will dictate the height of the buildings, but the developer and the builders, they've committed to things like hip roofs and doing what they can to minimize essentially the pitch to make them as, as low as possible, and, and these are all quality people, the, the original developer, the buyers, the representatives, and I trust that they're going to, going to keep their word. So with all of that, I'm, I'm confident that this is going to end up being a very nice, there's really no evidence as, as much as there is a fear that there's a, property values would go down, that, that there would be. It'll be a very nice transition, and I guess I would close with, again, I, and we, and Counselor Starr talked about this, that are informational, this comes up every time, and this is something that we struggle with as policymakers, which is, there's a lot of concern about anything multifamily, but we have to look at it from a policy perspective about sprawl and, and how much the tax base is in the city and, and density, and the question I, I have to ask myself, and I would, and I do challenge people sometimes, is if I can't approve apartments at the corner of two arterials, where in the city can I put apartments? So we have to be very responsible in the policymaking arena and, and make the tough choices. So I'll stop there. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Other discussion, counsel, on this item? All right, hearing none, let's take a vote then, please.
Councilmembers Kylie.
Yes.
Knightzert.
Yes.
Selberg.
Yes.
Sale.
Yes.
Starr.
Yes.
Recky.
Yes.
Erickson.
Yes.
Yes.
Brecky.
Yes.
Erickson.
Yes.
That item passes seven to zero. Move on to our next item, please.
Next item is fifty-nine. A resolution of the City of Sioux Falls approving the preliminary plan of Hazelton Edition fourteen oh nine, fourteen oh oh nine, twenty twenty-one. Private applicants, Braz Engineering Incorporated, Eric Case.
Councilor Jensen, you want to leave again?
Yeah, I got to recuse myself.
All right.
Thirty point zero one seven.
Got it. Go ahead, Jason.
All right, so this is the preliminary plan for the rezoning we just talked about, and really the reason why they have to go there, I kind of alluded to before, is that additional access, exterior access point on Yukon and Benson for Olympia Trail is really the reason why they have to come back forward with amended preliminary subdivision plans.
Got it. Thanks, Jason. Anyone from the public who would like to speak to this item? All right, councilors, any questions here for Jason? Councilor Knightzert, go ahead.
One question. Yukon Trail currently terminates, I think, at about the end of these homes, and it doesn't connect to Benson. Do you know what's going to drive the timing of the build-out of that down to Benson Road? If engineering is going to require it in the short term, if it's really a convenience for the property owners? Because there would be units right by there, but...
Well, I'll try and answer for Shannon. I'm not, no traffic engineer, but I would assume once they start developing that south parcel that's adjacent to Yukon Trail, because, or on the west side of Yukon Trail, since that's a collector, that would be developer paid for, once they start developing those areas, then they would have to pay and construct that rest of that street, so...
And they likely wouldn't be granted access directly on Benson, because it's an arterial and not at the quarter mile, so they would have to have a paved road on the collector.
To get out on Yukon, yep.
So it would really be driven by when they decided to develop Parcel Three.
Yep.
Okay, thanks.
All right. Other questions for Jason here? Move of approval?
Second, Kylie.
All right. Motion by Selberg, seconded by Kylie to approve fifty-nine. Any discussion here, council? All right, hearing none, let's take a vote, please.
Councilmember Kylie.
Yes.
Knightzert.
Yes.
Selberg.
Yes.
Sale.
Yes.
Starr.
Yes.
Brecky.
Yes.
Erickson.
Yes.
That passes seven to zero. Item fifty-four.
Item fifty-four is a second reading, an ordinance of the City of Sioux Falls, South Dakota, authorizing the mayor to enter into a master license agreement between the City of Sioux Falls and New Singular Wireless PCS LLC, doing business as AT&amp;T, for the installation and maintenance of poles and small cell equipment in cities, city rights of way.
I'd like to welcome Cheryl Bog, new city attorney. This is the first time you've presented to the council, so welcome, Cheryl.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor and councilmembers, I am Cheryl Bog, new assistant city attorney for the City of Sioux Falls. I am presenting the second reading of the AT&amp;T Master License Agreement and Ordinance on behalf of Mr. Jerry Johnlin, who is Sioux Falls Traffic Light and Power Superintendent, who is unable to be present due to a scheduling conflict. At the first reading, Mr. Johnlin presented a short presentation and introduction regarding the AT&amp;T Master License Agreement and Ordinance, along with Mr. Johnlin. Ms. Cheryl Riley from AT&amp;T also gave this short presentation with a PowerPoint slideshow. I understand council had a few questions regarding the Master License Agreement, and those questions have been answered. Nothing new has developed since that time of the first reading, and I have no updates for the council and the mayor. I would appreciate your support on the project. Ms. Riley and myself are present and available to answer any questions you may have.
All right, thank you, Cheryl. Anyone from the public who would like to speak to this item tonight? Come on up, ma'am. Good evening.
I just have a question. My name is Sarah Coob, and I'm just wondering if those are five G towers?
Correct.
They are. Okay, and have we done any long-term studies on health problems from areas that are already utilizing that technology? Anyone? I don't know if they've done any study.
This isn't an engaging forum, but you can make comments, yeah.
I'm just questioning how far along in this process it is, because I'm sitting here going, there's some studies out there that are troubling, and I'm wondering if we've reviewed those studies and decided as a community that we're willing to take those risks?
Okay, thank you. Anyone else here to speak on this item tonight? All right, councilors, do you have any questions for Cheryl or Cheryl? Move of approval?
Second, Sale.
Okay, motion by Kylie, seconded by Sale. Any discussion here, council? Go ahead, Councilor Brecky.
Just a brief remark and partially in response to the public testimony. We've been informed that really in this, in this arena, the federal government has been very clear that they have, they have taken over control of this issue from a nationwide standpoint, and the city's involvement, cities across the country's involvement is fairly limited to what we can do, and we can't interfere or prevent these companies from coming in and doing this, because there's federal legislation to protect them. And so, you know, those kinds of health issues, I guess we have to assume have been addressed by our federal government, but nonetheless, our involvement is fairly limited and has been highly restricted, you know, in terms of what we did, and there's already been some litigation to resolve those issues by other cities, as this rollout has happened from the national level. So what we, we've done, we've done what we can, and we certainly are looking out for the city's interests, but we don't have a lot of flexibility on this, and we've already passed it for one of the providers. So I think what they have in place is very similar to the one we've already passed, and we can't really pass it for one and prevent another from having the same. And again, the federal government has made it clear that these companies are going to be able to roll out this, this industry, you know, throughout the nation.
Any other discussion, council? All right, let's take a vote then, please.
Councilmembers Kylie.
Yes.
Knightzert.
Yes.
Selberg.
Yes.
Sale.
Yes.
Starr.
Yes.
Brecky.
Yes.
Erickson.
Yes.
Jensen.
Yes.
All right, that item passes eight to zero. Item fifty-five, please.
Item fifty-five is a second reading, an ordinance of the City of Sioux Falls, South Dakota, amending the Code of Ordinances of the city by amending Chapter seventy-seven, Parking Regulations, Subchapter Public Parking Advisory Board. Sponsors, councilmembers Kylie and Erickson.
Councilor Kylie.
Thank you very much. This ordinance change came about as a result of a recent meeting relating to city parking property, and during that, we had entered into a discussion about the need for the Public Parking Advisory Board to meet, and it was expressed at that time that it was difficult to fill the positions on the advisory board. So this is an effort to ease some of those restrictions, make it a little easier to fill the openings, so that the board can meet on a regular basis, one meeting per quarter is what's recommended. So terms were reduced from five years to three years to make them more in common with other boards in terms of their, how, the terms that their members serve. Also, we also initiated the ability for somebody outside of the Business Improvement District to serve on the board as well. As it currently exists, you'd have to be an owner or appointed by an owner of property within the business independent district, so that will give some flexibility to allow others to serve on the board, and I might say, other users of the downtown parking facilities. So I ask for your support.
All right, thank you, councilor. Anyone from the public here to speak on this item tonight? All right, let's get a motion on the floor.
Move to approve.
Second.
Okay, motion by Kylie and seconded by Erickson. Discussion, councilors, on this item? All right, hearing none, let's take a vote on it, please.
Councilmembers Kylie.
Yes.
Knightzert.
Yes.
Selberg.
Yes.
Sale.
Yes.
Starr.
Yes.
Brecky.
Yes.
Erickson.
Yes.
Jensen.
Yes. All right, that item passes eight to zero. Next item, please.
Item fifty-six is a first reading, an ordinance of the City of Sioux Falls, South Dakota, amending the revised joint zoning ordinance for Lincoln County and the City of Sioux Falls by rezoning property legally described as Aggie's tract one, except lot one and two of the W one-two southwest, one-fourth of section eleven T one hundred north, R forty-nine west, of the fifth principal meridian, Lincoln County, South Dakota, from the A-one Agricultural District to the RR Rural Residential District. Recommendation is set a date a second reading for the Joint Sioux Falls City Council-Lincoln County Commission Meeting of Tuesday, May twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-one.
The applicant and owner here is the Aggie family. This is located at two six eight nine four, four hundred and eightieth Avenue. It's just northwest of Good Earth Park on the east side of Minnehaha County, or Lincoln County, excuse me. It's about thirty-nine acres in size. The purpose of this rezoning is, the applicant is looking at subdividing this thirty-nine acres into twenty-five lot acre-sized, single-family residential subdivision.
All right, thank you, Jason. Anyone from the public who would like to speak to this item tonight? All right, councilors, any questions for Jason on this one? All right, look for a motion, a date, a second reading for Tuesday, May twenty-five here.
So moved, Erickson.
Second. All right, motion by Erickson, seconded by Jensen. Any discussion here, council? All right, seeing none, let's take a vote, please.
Councilmembers Kylie.
Yes.
Knightzert.
Yes.
Selberg.
Yes.
Sale.
Yes.
Starr.
Yes.
Brecky.
Yes.
Erickson.
Yes.
Jensen.
Yes. All right, that item passes eight to zero. Item fifty-seven.
Item fifty-seven is a resolution declaring the necessity to construct sidewalk on East Arrowhead Parkway and South Six Mile Road, and assessing the cost to each lot or tract of land benefiting thereby. Sponsors, the mayor.
Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor, council. Travis Larson with the City of Sioux Falls Engineering Department. This resolution of necessity is for sidewalk construction as part of the Arrowhead Parkway Reconstruction Project. Current projection for bidding is fall twenty twenty-one, but just getting ahead of things. Sidewalks are assessed per ordinance ninety-six oh thirty-five. Owners have been contacted. There are no known issues at this time, and in addition to that, letters notifying the properties of this meeting were sent out April twentieth with a copy of the resolution and exhibit. Engineering requests your support and approval.
All right, thanks, Travis. Anyone from the public who would like to speak on this item here? Councilors, any questions for Travis? Go ahead, Councilor Knightzert.
The sidewalk in question would be on Six Mile Road or Arrowhead Parkway?
Sorry, I should have switched the slides here. So this is kind of what, showing what the build-out will look like, and you can see kind of that turquoise on the exhibit. There's two properties north of Arrowhead, or three, excuse me, and then one to the south of Arrowhead.
Okay, so are these both arterials?
Correct.
Okay, so I, A and B presumably, because if it's an arterial, they wouldn't generally be assessed unless they had access.
Yep, which, which they will.
A and B do, and then C? Will they have an access?
I might defer to Shannon Austin, but I believe they're supposed to, they're in talks about getting access off of Arrowhead Parkway.
Okay.
And that's not shown on the exhibit.
Okay, so it's the fact that they would like to have or keep access is why they would be assessed?
Right, correct, yep. C and D, they want access to Arrowhead, so.
Got it.
That's part of that.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions for Travis?
Move of approval?
Second.
All right, motion by Selberg, seconded by Knightzert to approve item fifty-seven. Any discussion, council?
Mr. Mayor, I do have a question.
Councilor Kylie, go ahead.
Travis, if you could go back to that, there was a property just west of D. Do they already have sidewalk?
The property to the west?
Just the west of D, they serve delicious burgers and certain beverages.
So, and I might defer to Shannon again, but they're in talks about getting kind of like, oh, what's the word I'm looking for, a road. They won't actually have direct access to Six Mile or Arrowhead, they'll have a frontage road.
Okay, and they're kind of right in the midst of future construction as well, too, by the looks of it, so. Okay, thank you.
All right, we got a motion and a second. Any final discussion or questions then? All right, let's vote on this one, please.
Councilmembers Kylie.
Yes.
Knightzert.
Yes.
Selberg.
Yes.
Sale.
Yes.
Starr.
Yes.
Brecky.
Yes.
Erickson.
Yes.
Jensen.
Yes. That passes eight to zero. Next item, please.
Next item is sixty, a resolution determining certain property surplus and authorizing City of Sioux Falls to gift certain surplus property to Great Bear Management Incorporated. Sponsor is the mayor.
Good evening, Kelby.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council, Kelby Maris with Parks and Recreation. This resolution would gift the forty-four chairs and the tow cable from the old chairlift to Great Bear Management for their use and fundraising to assist in future projects for the, for the area. Steve Sanford, the president of the Great Bear Management Board, is here with me tonight. Park Board did recommend approval of this resolution at their meeting in April. We'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
All right, thanks, Kelby. Anyone from the public who would like to speak to this item tonight? Come on up, Steve.
I'm only going to take about forty-five minutes.
Well, you get five, so go ahead.
Thanks so much for considering the resolution. The whole purpose is to try to monetize, so to speak, property that's left over from our chair replacement. These do have, among a number of people, a great sentimental value. I mean, they go back forty years, they're some of the only wood ski chairs left in the country. But we'll sell them locally, I'm pretty sure. We have a method designed to try to get that done. We anticipate a great deal of success. All the money raised, obviously, is going to stay in Great Bear and be used for the good things that we keep trying to do. One of the other things we're going to do is, and I'll show you, it may be hard to see, but this is the cable, a foot of it, from the chairlift, and we're making plaques of them, and we'll sell those as well. And again, all the proceeds will go to benefit Great Bear. And so, there's really no downside to what we're trying to do, and obviously, we're immensely grateful for the support we've received from the City Council and the Parks Department, and we're thrilled to be a part of it. I need to sort of take a tiny bit of liberty for just a few seconds to tell you, if you did not know, what an incredible job our staff did this year in very, very difficult sort of finances. I mean, with COVID, the increased demand, I spent several nights out there, not several, more than several, and watched with, oh, no, oh, no, what's going to hap, but it didn't happen. I mean, our staff delivered with devotion and skill like you just don't see, all right? And I want to say publicly to everyone I, I can tell, what a wonderful position, job our group did. I didn't have anything to do with it, so everyone there did. So thank you so much for being supportive, hope you're appreciative of, I don't care about me, but what our, what our people do for the city, and we'll keep after it, I promise you. Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. Anyone else here to speak on this item tonight? All right, councilors, any questions for Mr. Sanford or Kelby on this item?
Move to approve.
Second, Brecky.
All right, motion by Kylie, seconded by Brecky to approve item sixty. Any discussion here, council? All right, let's take a vote, please.
Councilmembers Kylie.
Yes.
Knightzert.
Yes.
Selberg.
Yes.
Sale.
Yes.
Starr.
Yes.
Brecky.
Yes.
Erickson.
Yes.
Jensen.
Yes. All right, item sixty passes eight to zero. We'll move on to sixty-one.
Item sixty-one is a resolution approving the release of a permanent sanitary sewer easement located in lot seven, block one of Timberline Estates, second addition to the City of Sioux Falls, Minnehaha County, South Dakota. Sponsor is the mayor.
Good evening again. This easement release is located in Timberline Estates, second addition, roughly southeast of Cleveland Avenue and Rice Street. Is a permanent utility easement that was established by Platt in Book sixty-seven and filed with the Register of Deeds on September eighth, two thousand and five. The permanent utility easement was then reaffirmed by Platt in Book eighty-three and page eighty-two, filed March seventeenth, twenty twenty-one. The City of Sioux Falls engineering staff recommends the portion of the sanitary sewer easement areas, as shown on Exhibit A, be released to the property described above. Engineering requests your support and approval.
All right, thanks, Travis. Anyone from the public who would like to speak on this item tonight? Council, any questions on this item? Looking for a motion.
Move of approval?
Motion by Selberg, seconded by Sale to approve item sixty-one. Any discussion here? All right, hearing none, let's take a vote, please.
Councilmembers Kylie.
Yes.
Knightzert.
Yes.
Selberg.
Yes.
Sale.
Yes.
Starr.
Yes.
Brecky.
Yes.
Erickson.
Yes.
Jensen.
Yes.
All right, that passes eight to zero. Item sixty-two.
Item sixty-two is a resolution including certain contiguous territory within the corporate limits of the City of Sioux Falls, South Dakota, Annexation zero zero one four two eleven dash twenty twenty-one, Sunday addition. Private applicant is David Sunday.
This is an application, and the owner is Shelby Albee. It's located at eighty-three hundred East Tenth Street, just east of the Fred Assam
All right, hearing none, let's take a vote on this, please.
Council members Kylie.
Yes.
Naitzer.
Yes.
Selberg.
Yes.
Sale.
Yes.
Starr.
Yes.
Brecky.
Yes.
Erickson.
Yes.
Jensen.
Yes.
That passes eight to zero. Councillors, we got any new business tonight? All right, the next up will be our public input, general public input for our agenda. As a reminder, input during this portion will last three minutes per person, and during general public input, the public is welcome to speak on any topic that we didn't cover tonight. So if you're here for general public input, you can come on forward, please.
My name is Sarah Coob. I was here earlier trying to get this up here, and I'm sorry. Amendment twenty-six, there are people who are using medicinal marijuana with or without the state's permission, and we would like to have the permission, which is asking you guys to establish a bare-bones thing, so at least I can hand in the application and have a doctor's note with me. And I do fit the criteria for one of the ailments, I have gastropharysis going on and PTSD. So those two issues together have created turmoil in my life, and cannabis has helped me a lot with that. But I need to be able to use my medicine and to use it without criminal instigatory things going on, and when you're using something illegally, you tend to run into criminal, you know, criminal penalties. I've been very good up until two weeks ago, and I'm just like, I wanted to hand in my application in April. I was told I'd be able to April first. I have my two hundred dollars. Who do I hand it to, guys? And I understand you guys want to sit back and watch the state, but you have citizens in this city who could benefit having these bare bones in place. So at least, you know, you can look them up in their database and go, yep, she has a doctor, and yes, she has a note. So then Nebraska's finest and North Dakota's finest aren't fleecing us, taking medicine that we really can't afford to lose, and then having them do thousands of dollars worth of damage to not only your reputation, but your life. So I'm asking my city council and the City of Sioux Falls to step up and put this in place. I think seventy percent of the population voted for medicinal marijuana. I think that's more than my governor right now, and I voted for our governor. So I'm asking you guys, please, 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 get the bones implemented so that us who are suffering, I'm suffering, I'm not living a good life right now. I'm better than I was with cannabis, but I'm still suffering, and I'm asking you guys to make it so that the civil and the criminal penalties are not there for us who need this medicine. So I appreciate your time. Thank you very much, you guys. You guys have a hard job. It's getting harder by the second, and I understand that. But thanks for listening, and have a great night.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Greetings. I'm David Zokaitis, and every now and again, I come here and add a few notes to something I've talked about before. So that's my topic for tonight. Little bit of preliminary background, I came across this book, it was referred to me by a friend or a colleague, and it talks about police in South Dakota and how they break their solemn oath to protect our constitution. It was written by a South Dakota game warden, and you would expect somebody with that kind of a background to be very interested in law and order, but that's the book. So now, a little bit of review about what I talked about before. Way back in August twenty nineteen, I talked about how important it is to respect our right to free speech, and that's the preliminary slide from my PowerPoint deck. A little more review, what happened in twenty nineteen is a man was on the street, and he had a hard time with the police, and he expressed his displeasure in an eloquent manner, but, you know, freedom is kind of messy. He was charged with a variety of crimes, and there were about six officers involved in this particular instance. The book that I mentioned has this picture on page X, early in the book. And there's the description that I'll let you read. There's a South Dakota Supreme Court case there that says this kind of activity is legal. That's the citation, State of South Dakota versus Shune in twenty-eight, two thousand and eight. So that all happened in Sioux Falls, and I have a few recommendations, as I normally do. The man was charged with three crimes, two were tossed out, but the third conviction, I don't think that we should let that stand. It's inappropriate. Shouldn't charge people for crimes when they're executing their right for, to free speech. And I also think we need to give police more training than the state requires. Thirteen weeks is just not near enough for the complexity of the task. And we should respect civil rights and reform government until civil rights are respected. Now, as always, you know, I got to end with some nature. So I was on a bank trail, and I took this picture of some guy having a good time. Somebody decorated a statue, and, you know, we should all try to enjoy art, nature, and exercise. For that, have a good evening, everybody.
All right, thank you, David. Anyone else for public input tonight? Good evening.
I want to thank the mayor's office for making, for the chief resigning his position, retiring. It was done. I want to thank the Tenhaken administration for, the multicultural director is no longer here also. Now, I just talked to some sergeants and officers, and here we go in high-crime areas. Last year, we was fighting sexual assaults, stabbings. We didn't have enough police officers. This summer is going to be worse than last summer on policemen, not because they're retiring, because they're quitting. Ask the sergeants and the officers, why are they quitting? Because in the world of today, they can't do the job. They go to homicide, and they think that it's reality, and they can't do it. Can't handle overdoses. They do not like internal policies that are set within the city of Sioux Falls. We're going to be down, and I'm going to, and they quote me because I don't want this to get mixed up. We have more people quitting on that police department force right now, and I don't care what the city attorney's office or the union says. We have people quitting as of today, not retiring. In my neighborhood association, when I took over, I said I would be darned that the criminals was going to take over my neighborhood. Last year, we had twenty-one minutes on a nine-one-one call when the guy cut him from ear to ear. Now, I'm going to have to sit there and police the whole neighborhood again with the bloods on my hands and pulling them apart because they're fighting because of what tribe they come from, a sexual assault that happened in a garage. Four dudes, sexual assaulted a fourteen-year-old in a home last year because of retaliation. This is what we're facing. We're a down policeman. As of today, policemen are still quitting, they're not retiring, they're quitting. We have more people quitting than retiring this year. I would ask the mayor and city council and the charter to open up the policy to where external chief of policees could come in and put in an application for the position of the chief of police. There is no sense that we cannot have new blood and new ice in the police department. When we always have internal, 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 it's signs of corruption. And I also want to make it clear that we need this police department that Chief Burns was against accredited.
All right, thank you. Anyone else for public input tonight? All right, seeing none, councillors, need a motion to adjourn us out?
Adjourned.
Second, Jensen.
Motion by Erickson, seconded by Jensen. All those in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Opposed? That is carried, we are adjourned. Have a good night, everyone.